I gotta go get.
Okay, you're hot.
Very good. We'd like to welcome everybody this morning to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the twenty-third day of June two thousand twenty-five. We appreciate your attendance today. We will begin our meeting with a um a prayer offered by Colonel Al Matheson. And that'll be followed by Bruce Washburn will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father who art in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity to serve in the capacities of both civilian and military. And we're grateful for the opportunities that we have. We ask thy blessing to be upon us and deliberations that we might always be worthy of the blessings we receive. We ask thy benetention to be upon us and the activities that we have and those which may represent. We do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll go ahead and um. Look at approving our minutes. What was the date on those?
Ninth.
Ninth. Same, okay. Your ninth minutes?
Have we got a, have I got a hard copy of the, or do I?
No, sorry.
No, it's alright. I'm just trying to get it up on my screen.
Yeah, let me do that.
Actually, this will be faster for you. Here, I got it. I got it. It's up on, it's trying. I'd move for approval of the June ninth. Commission meeting minutes.
Okay, I'll second that. So it's been moved to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Um now the motion for the payment of the bills, the claims?
Uh what are the dates?
Dates for June ninth through the June twenty-second.
I'll move for approval of the warrants from June ninth to June twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that. It's been moved to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh let's see, we will now go to our. John, do we have reports today?
Yeah, building and zoning.
Building and zoning. There's Terry. Okay. And then we've got engineer, Public Works and Commission. Public Works Bruce is, I got a, we got a text from um. And I'd like to excuse Commissioner Robinson this morning. He's out of town, I believe. Um and then he, he also wanted me to mention that Bruce, our Public Works Director had a couple of dozers down on the fire in Washington County. And uh he's still down there, I believe, helping them. I think their, their efforts helped save a couple of homes. That's, that's wonderful. Um kudos to them and their help with that fire. Um so Terry, we'll go ahead and turn some time over to you.
Sorry, I'm out of breath. Been running. Tried to get a couple inspections so they pour concrete. Sorry I didn't get this out sooner. Last week was vacation, so trying to deal with everything and. And then we got a couple of things settled out. I think I'm gonna probably read just most of this right off. Building Department, Chelsea did submit letter resignation Tuesday, so I didn't know if you'd heard that yet. But she did submit the letter resignation with everything that had happened. Uh we will be working with HR commissioners to see if we need to restructure, what we need to redo with our department. And also with the auditors to see what we need to do with reporting, reports and all that stuff. So we can make sure we're in track and online with everything again. Building permits issued. We're gonna compare last year and this year. Last year, at the same time, we had two hundred and fifty-nine permits issued. This year, to date, the same, we had two hundred and fifty-six permits issued.
Ah, yours is really slowing down. That's great.
We slowed down. Three permits.
Love it.
I, I got to breathe for about three seconds.
Get you some rest.
But the good thing is, is the next line it says fees. Last year, at the same time, we collected five hundred and eight thousand. Just over five hundred and eight. This year, we've collected just shy of five hundred and forty-nine. So fees have come up. We've collected, we've had more commercial, bigger projects come in, so dollar amount's still going up. So everything is looking good there. The next one, our inspections. Last year, we'd done sixteen hundred and fifteen inspections where compared to fifteen hundred and ninety-eight, so we were down seventeen inspections. So I got to breathe four more seconds there. So no, things are still good, looking good, still busy. We've got a lot of stuff coming in as far as that, so we're staying way busy still, seeing a lot of stuff coming in. We got the plans, uh finally got the plans, approved plans from planner review for the jail.
I took those to the recorder's office. I, I just went in the main gate, you know, to the desk. I'm like, excuse me, miss. Those up there. I'm like, these need to be scanned by tonight. Oh, it was a roll.
It's a tree.
How, how thick unrolled?
I don't know. I didn't unroll it.
I think there's about five hundred and fifty pages total if you got the whole set.
Well, I'm trying to get those to, I, I'm trying to get, Kendall's digitizing those so I can email them to those that are interested in buying it, so they can show it their architect and.
Yeah, no, they said Kendall was gonna get right on it.
Yeah. So, um a little bit of an update on that. I visited with Carrie about that. Um that type of, those, those type of maps will actually destroy her scanner. And so Ken, yeah, like the, the dirt on them, the fact that it's an old Blu-ray.
Oh, they were dirty?
Yeah. And so what he's, what Kendall's been doing is actually using his phone to digitize them. Oh. Laying them out. And he's got a few sheets.
Yeah, he sent, they look good. The sheets, he sent me like.
Yeah, and, and you know, it, it's funny, back in the day, the technology we needed, but you know, what we have in our hand is. And so, uh anyway, long story short, I'm also sending those to Morley McConkey, who's gonna do uh our appraisal. We've got our, our commitment letter.
It'll be handy to have them digitized.
Yeah, and I don't know that we're gonna get all five hundred sheets. I don't know that we want all five hundred.
Well, and this, that's the old jail? I don't know. I, I haven't seen them, so I don't know how they're coming out, if they're coming out good enough, clean enough for what we need to do for the, uh for people looking at purchasing for appraisal type stuff. I don't know.
They wanna, they wanna give those to their architect so he can start, you know, he'll probably need a lot of it.
But worst case scenario, we can actually give them the physical copy, you know.
Thirty, twenty-four by thirty-six.
I know.
You've got your scanner. That's what I was just gonna say.
My scanner would be less um affected by.
It may not be. Yours is a different style.
Would you talk to Kendall before you leave?
They're, they're.
Possible, yeah, let's do that.
Those, those sheets are bound as well, so you'd have to unbind them.
Well.
And those are the.
Do that. Hey, here's what you do. Bring it by the cabinet shop. I'll cut them on my table saw. And then you just screw a board on each side and bind them back together.
Let's, let's look at that.
I can do that.
And see what we can do.
Yeah.
He's, has he got them downstairs?
They're still in the recorder's office as far as the last time I saw.
We'll, we'll look at them.
That'd be great.
It'd be faster if we could do that. But the new jail, like they uploaded all the, the new jail, they've uploaded for permit for the new jail, for building permit for that. So we're online. I met with uh Leighton and their crew two weeks ago before I left. To kind of work out schedules for inspections, calls and that stuff. So we're getting close to starting the groundwork inspections on the new jail.
Okay.
Um my, my brain's fighting with each other. It's fine.
Do we need to talk after?
Probably.
I'll put my other hat on.
Trying to wrap my, no, I'm wrapping my head around some stuff, but it's, yeah, we're, we're good.
Well, we'll talk. But yes, no, we've, we've, we've got some stuff done on, on.
So the, the, were, what I delivered to the recorder's office, old jail?
Probably the old jail.
Oh yeah, I didn't.
You didn't look at it?
I didn't know what I was delivering. I.
Who did you get it from?
Never mind, yeah. I never had given it any thought, but I'm back, I'm back on board.
Who did you get it from?
I got it from.
You got it from Mike Gibbs.
I got it from Shalon.
Okay.
Shalon Gibbs, yeah.
Gibbs gave him a Shalon then.
Well, that makes sense.
That is the old jail.
Because I got it from Shalon at the new jail site.
Yes. Yes. So that would be the old jail that Paul and I have been talking about, trying to get digitized for the.
Yeah, no, I'm in. And that makes way more sense, cause, cause when they're like, it needs to be digitized, I'm like, well, everything's on.
Everything.
Like, everything that we look at's already on.
Everything for the new jail is digitized.
I know, it just confused.
This was the old jail. If you got it from Shalon, it's the old jail that Paul and I've been working on.
Okay, good.
If Rich, if Rich, if you could scan those and, and have them as one PDF so we can open it on Blue Beam, that'd be huge. That'd be awesome.
We'll work on that and look and see what we've got. So that's where we're at. The new jail is getting, I will be reviewing that this week to get a, a permit ready, and then we'll start doing inspections. They were talking this week or next week, they'll start doing inspections for underground stuff.
I've got a, I've got something, I'll just bring it up now.
Okay.
In public, but um. Cause I haven't talked to the other commissioners about this yet. I did talk to Mike Gibbs and he was okay with it, but Cedar City is looking to build a new park for the, kind of the north end.
Yeah.
Up the street from our jail.
Right.
And Phil Schmidt, who's running for mayor, called me and said, Paul, why don't we do an, do an agreement with Cedar City? Cause that's gonna take two or three years to get the other park built. Why don't we fence that grass and put some playground equipment and let them use that for a park for the time being?
Like an interim park?
Yeah, until we sell it.
At the old jail? I like that idea.
And so.
Yeah.
I said, I don't, and I talked to Sam and.
He stepped out the back door.
But legally, I think, I think where we have inmates mowing the grass, we'd have to have the city probably take over that.
Yeah, but, or we could close it, lock it while they're mowing, make sure nobody's there. We could work on something. I like that idea though.
That sounds okay?
I think we'd have to just make sure we're not getting anybody in trouble for um folks that are on the uh sex offender list. Cause that would put them within a thousand feet of kids.
But it's something to look.
They're locked up.
Locked up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it, but it's something.
The only thought I had was maybe.
Cause I do, I do like that. I know they've been talking to that north end, and if we could work something out, that'd be a good place for now, unlock, put a fence, fence it up.
That was a.
You know, I think if, if it'll, if it's legal, let's do it.
So maybe we can get Sam to look into that. I like that. So, so. And then one of your regular agenda items is the lot line adjustment for the back part, which we've talked about, which will, is on your regular agenda. Uh if we go through my list, code enforcement, Trent is working hard on the zoning violations, trying to keep things up to as much as we can cleaned up, keep things cleaned up. We did, excuse me, we did get some signs put up out in Cedar Valley Acres that the residents are pleased and happy that we were willing to put some signs up that says, hey, work with the building department, no trash, let's keep things cleaned up and stuff with travel trailers and that. So they're pleased and they're, they're excited that we, to see that we are trying to do something with the next step on that to help keep things kind of cleaned up. And Trent is also studying with the building codes. He's got his building inspector license already. He's working on his plumbing to hopefully retake that this week. So with everything that's happened, we're gonna, we're looking, I've got to work with you guys and Jennifer and HR to reorganize our office a little bit in there. So we'll be talking about that as we come up. Maintenance Department, we had a big leak at the fairground in the parking lot on the irrigation system that was bubbling up through the parking lot.
The new one we built?
No, no, in the parking lot of the fairground, in the existing up where we part, set the tents up and stuff.
Oh.
We think uh we had hit a water line and it's just started moving and broke loose a little bit. So they fixed a leak in the parking lot two weeks ago up there with the irrigation system. So uh they have, yearly, we have to have backflow preventers inspected by city and stuff. And Cedar and Parowan and I can't remember who else, but they've had that. We've got a couple that need to be updated. And we've got one at the Justice Center. When we start redoing landscaping, we'll have to replace that in the springtime. So that's gonna cost us a little bit. We've had fire extinguishers, recertified for the cars in the buildings. That was a big expense that we didn't have planned, but I think we can work that into the budget. We needed to keep those up to date in the buildings. Uh maintenance, uh we did tear, cut down some dead trees right there on the east side of the clinic at the fairgrounds. Leveled that out and made a little more parking, so that's cleaned up on that side. It looks nice. Uh they're just regular ma, routine maintenance on county buildings, keeping things up. Elevator, our big question, we probably get the elevator. We think the parts should be coming in the next couple of weeks to start the modernization on the elevator here at the courthouse. And then we've had a couple air conditioners and stuff go down with the hot heat. So we've got a few things, it's, expenses have come up that we hadn't planned for, that we're watching the budget to see if we're still gonna be okay there. Uh planning department, we've received some applications. Uh we're gonna, the position to work with Reed. We had several more Jennifer sent to me Friday afternoon so that I didn't review them while I was on my vacation. That will get Reed to look at and see if we can start setting interviews up next week for, for that position there. Reed's working on the RFP with capital facilities and impact studies, and hopefully he should have that out first week in July to get that started. And that ties back into our, uh the sewer impact fee money that we were looking at. So that, that study showed that RFP should be out in the next week or week and a half. Uh and then we're working on the rezoning of the tiers around Newcastle and Summit that we've, same thing we've done around Parowan and Canarville. We're taking the Newcastle and Summit one to planning commission, not on the tenth, we moved it back a week. So that'll go to the planning commission to start for public hearing on that, to try to clean that area up for this sewer. And then Reed's got many others, projects that we're doing. He's still staying pretty busy with where he's at, so we've got that. And then the last statement I do want to read is I want to thank the commissioners, HR, especially Jennifer, county attorneys, especially Sam, especially my staff for the support. They have been in light of everything that's, was, that has, was brought to the county, attention of the county. We will work, we will work to improve things in our department, to make things better. So I do appreciate the support and.
We appreciate you and sorry for all the.
And it's, it's unfortunate things went, they, how they did, but I do appreciate the support. We will work harder to watch things and see if we can get things back in line, so.
Well, we, we appreciate you. I, you know, spent a lot of time with you and your staff and you guys rock. Yeah, I, I mean, no doubt that it's fine. Yeah, you'll be fine. And whatever we can do to, whatever we can do to help streamline things or, you know, whatever we need to do. I mean, your office is busy and we can't, I mean, we've, we've got to keep you guys humming along, so whatever we can do.
I appreciate it.
Life happens.
It does. It does.
Some things are very unfortunate, but it.
And, and we will make it through it. As a county as a whole, we'll make it through it. My department, we will make it through it. We've got some good support. We've talked to Jennifer. And Sam, there's been some good help. Commissioner, I do appreciate it. We'll make it through it. I had a good vacation. They threatened me that I had to go on vacation last week. It was needed, so I am grateful for.
Did you catch any fish?
I didn't go fishing, but I saw a couple bears, lots of elk, some moose.
Where'd you go?
Yellow, West Yellowstone, uh Island Park, uh.
Old fun.
Yellowstone and Red Lodge.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Crossed the, uh, Bear Tooth Highway.
Awesome.
We had a good time, so.
Great.
Well needed, so. Anything else we need to be atten, pay attention to or look?
I, just a comment. I was pulling around your uh building the other day and I was thinking, man, this is a nice parking lot. I'll bet you guys are loving that.
That parking lot is fabulous. That's probably the first, the best thing we've done in the last year is to get that back together and have a good parking lot. Everybody loves it now, so.
Service for many years. It's nice.
And I couldn't, I can't tell you who, I've had a couple of people approach me lately and say they're appreciative for Trent. And, and his efforts. And I couldn't even tell you who it was. Like I didn't, I just said, thank you. I'll pass that on and yeah, we're doing.
I've actually heard that as well.
I've heard that.
Thank you. And I will let you know.
For people that have stopped me on the street, so that I don't know, I couldn't tell you who they are.
And, and as I said, I can't say enough for my, the office, the help I got. They've, they've been fabulous. Trent has done a lot to try to work with people to work the nuisances side, travel trailers, to make everybody happy. And they've been fabulous. My office has been fabulous to try to work with public. Hopefully we can get things back in a better working relationship now with the public that we deal with and to get things where we need it. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright, Rich, county engineer.
Good morning, commissioners. So uh yes, Bruce and actually Matt Arnold is out there helping Bruce on the Pine Valley Fire.
Did he take a track hole or just, they just got dozed?
No, no, uh Matt has gone as a support, keep them fueled, keep them moving. It's an important responsibility to have.
They take the six, seven, eight?
Pardon me?
What cats do they take?
Well, after talking to Bruce on Friday and sending Matt over with him on Saturday morning, they were only, Bruce is the only operator he could get himself. So he's operating one, one bulldozer. And Matt is his support, meaning the fuel truck, the on and off site, just making sure that um.
They just build the fire lines around the town or something, or what were they doing?
I haven't been up, so, and I don't want to bother the fire by just being a looky-loo. So I haven't talked to him. I sent him a message this morning to see how they were doing. But uh very important work, very helpful to be able to utilize our equipment to support uh the Forest Service and those kind of adventures. So yeah, anyway, that's where they're at. I expect to get a response when they probably have cell service again. Cause I asked how much longer they're gonna be out there, just so that we can do some planning and we know where, where our staff are. So just a few things to report. Uh phase one at BZI out on Iron Springs Road uh has been completed for their infrastructure requirements for the county, that being uh roads and, and uh they passed off on their sewer with I, uh Cedar City and, and are passing, passed off on their water supply with uh Iron, Iron, uh the district. So BZI, phase one, uh we are now doing, they're in their warranty period. We've been working on a, a number of things in the engineering department, uh just the constant addressing, the constant uh issuing of access permits. One of the big things is, as you are aware, they just uh, you just adopted the, as a commission, you adopted the Safe Streets for All. The uh grant for demonstration is due this Thursday. We're working with our consultant, Kimberly Horn, to get that application in on time so that we can get the funding. We chose to do uh things that, that were demonstrative and affordable. But they are uh interactive signs, widening page strips and uh, and some lighting and some of the cr, critical intersections. And so we'll, we'll discuss that later this uh morning as we asked to meet with the commissioner so we could talk about those things. But right now that's done. We've also uh received our recommendations from um Bowen Collins for Lower Coal Creek. And you've seen that, Commissioner Cousins. Uh it's a, it's a solution that will uh hopefully mitigate most of flooding. We can never say a hundred percent, but.
I'm excited. I think it's gonna be good. Initially, I was kind of opposed to it, but I think that. I mean, we've never wanted to run dirty water into our recharge pits, but, but if we can keep it clean, you know, I was, we had a meeting with Rich and where Bruce has a little extra money some years sometimes. Um you know, maybe we can buy a rock truck and a bigger track hole and just have them sitting there and just keep that clean.
Well, and if we, if we take the space we have and divide it into settling ponds, so that we can.
Have it isolated into one area, yeah.
And even if we can uh move that pond vice versa.
Right.
So one year it dries out, the next year it gets used.
Exactly.
And then we always have a large reserve area for the clean water. And then we always have a large reserve area for the clean water that will come out of those.
Maybe maybe NRCS would, maybe we can partition that off like we did at Quichapod and maybe they could make some kind of a. A gate where we can do that.
Exactly.
Either in either pond, so it dries out and we can excavate it.
And as you saw in the plan, they're taking a nearly a third of the silt will come out in Coal Creek between Bulldog Road and the airport.
What we're talking about, just for the public, um is right there's right there where the air. Air airplanes approach the airport. They fly right over the Western Rock pit that we've been using for recharge and just to the south of that pit is a pit. That Cedar City owns, which is about the same size, and there's a dam between them. And back back when Steve Platt was the engineer years ago, they had that huge event. Was it two thousand five? Was that when it was?
That was the big event.
And they had water get in there and actually broke that dike and made a mess and they rebuilt it. But um what they're what N R N R C S wants to do um is. Our Stevensville ditch can only handle about a thousand cubic feet per second. And that event we had, I think, what do we have, about twenty-five hundred going down there?
Yeah, but.
And that's twenty-one or twenty, and that's when it flooded flying out.
Topped and and had some problems.
And so what what NRCS wants to do is get permission. We wanna work with Cedar City on an MOU. And put and be able to on those high events that last maybe a twenty-four hour or forty-eight hour period is peel that top. Maybe we've got three thousand feet coming down and we wanna peel two thousand off and put it in that pit for a few hours. And just send a thousand feet down Stevensville. But it's gonna be dirty water and we're gonna have to keep it clean. And so um the beauty, we're kinda doing that same principle right now is we're taking. The we're taking the dirty water off of Coal Creek, putting it in the Schmidt pit and it settles all the sediment in that pit. And then the top water is just pristine clear, uh and it 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 overflows into the county pit. And then it goes through that new HDP, HDP twenty-four inch line we put into the airport pit over by the highway. And so clean water is going into those other pits and this pit's catching all the sediment, so we just have to clean one pit out. And it's really a neat thing. So and eventually our long-term goal is to um eventually acquire, if we can, from Western Rock, their pit. Put a pipe between the dam, so as we put dirty water in this pit and it settles the sediment out, the clean water goes through the pipe, equalizes both sides. And then we can also, I talked to Blake Demille someday, his pit will be available and then also. Hopefully Mel Clark's pit will be available and we can put pipes into those pits and we'll have a huge area for recharge. When we have these really wet years, we can. Put all as much water as we can in there and and just divert that over to those other pits and and have a huge.
And Commissioner, what so the public understands, this is not a next year plan. This is in fact a long-term plan that's been developed that will be a si- a fifty to seventy-year plan because we. We wanna work with our partners at the gravel pits so that they are fully mined out before we start to.
Right.
Im- implement the totality of this, but initially we can initiate, we can initiate that plan within the next couple of years. To take the uh tune the water down to a thousand CSF.
So when when do they, when do they, would they like to start construction on the?
Well, we all, now that we have uh moving forward and we've selected one of the options. And I and I have an appointment this week to meet with Cedar City to discuss this further as they're a partner with us. Once that's selected, we will put that out to to design. And so.
So we talking a couple, three years before they start?
We're talking three years before construction.
And have you talked to Cedar City yet?
I that appointment is set for this week. I think it's, I just saw it come back from Jonathan at the city. We're talking Tuesday, I think.
I think that'll give Western and that pit's almost mined out. It's, I'll bet it's within a year or two, so that should might work out as perfect, so.
Right. I've also, in in conjunction with preparation for the monsoon season, I've I began to inspect. And just make sure that the Quichapod channel, the Stevensville channel, they are 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 at their. They may look a little overgrown to the public, but we like to have the the willows. The willows will lie down, but they will keep the bank.
Yep.
We don't want trees in there, but willows are are our friend as long as they're not uh.
Too big.
Too large, yeah. And so we, so I just out uh between uh the uh. College Farm and uh Fifty-seven Hundred, I've looked at that, all of that right now, per my calculations, will still take a thousand CSF.
Are we looking at the um? The over the crossing of the of the channel going to Ladybug Nursery? They beat, they burned that up quite a bit and they've got some Jersey barriers to put there if they have an event right on that.
We we do. We we've worked with uh Ladybug and I've uh.
They've been flooded two or three times.
Things I wanna do on the east side with uh President Scott Brown's property just to protect that. We wanna put a little more ripper up in there, but we did ripper up that last year. That I measured it out. It it will take the thousand CSF, which we expect to go that direction.
On that leg.
Which will. So.
Is that about what the um?
The trouble is.
That about what the split will send that way is about a thousand?
Well, the split, here here's the trouble with the current split situation. It takes what it takes. It send forty, sixty.
Forty, right.
And if 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 a forty going that way is a thousand CSF, that's great. But if we get a large event of of um you know, four thousand CSF, forty percent is sixteen hundred CSF.
Right.
So so we don't have a control at the uh at the split there, at the Woodbury Split. And what I mean by that is it is in control, but we can't say, well, we wanna tune that and move water. And I've talked to Bowen Collins and and others about moving forward with coming up. With a methodology in which we gate it so that we can, we can decide where we want. Particularly in the next three or four years when we build those, that structure to the Coal Creek side. There is nothing on the Quichapod side to take overflow, so we'll always wanna keep it tuned down. But if we get these pits in place, we can then now have a place to take the large cloud burst.
I wish we could figure out a way to get um. Some of those large events over to that pit south of the new jail where they're taking material out of, cuz that's a pretty good size.
We do. We we do get that.
But I don't, we don't have a way to get it there yet. We don't have.
Oh, and and again, it's a gate system. It's how do you get it?
Nice if we had a way to get it there.
Right, so we can utilize our our resources.
Peel some, sit, peel some of that off and run into that pit. That'd be nice, but.
Yes, so it's a, it's an ongoing thing. I noticed as you all did this spring, we had uh early monsoon events in back in May. And they, two days of rain was quite a bit of water, especially just pot in in spot locations. We could use some of that in Pine Valley today, but I I just keep praying that we'll get either no wind and some water or or just no wind would help. So it's just an ongoing uh maintenance and and monitoring and and improving situation when it comes to flooding. There's other things going on. We continue to uh have growth, which is wonderful. We're talking to, as as Terry talked about, the number of permits. We look at those, we look at who's doing what and what they wanna do. We try to encourage business. A lot of times it it's a growing pains, but we remind the public that uh we we have a very. Inviting business atmosphere where lots of things are allowed. And that that sometimes frustrates people, but they need to understand that our zoning allows things. We presume that what you're asking is allowed. We presume that from the get-go. And in doing that presumption, then we look at how to mitigate issues. But if you come to to the county and wanna do X, Y, Z, we presume X, Y, Z is illegal activity. And is a permissible activity, so. Uh I don't I don't know that I can think of anything else that you might wanna hear about right now. Oh, we've got the sign stop.
I do have a question. That HDP uh that new drain we put out on eight hundred south by the by the uh the power station?
The only problem we had with.
Clear that out. Did it flow good?
Uh I wouldn't wanna been standing too close.
It it shot me. It made a huge difference in. Versus the culvert, it it really moved that water. Good.
As soon as we got got the uh tumbleweeds out and and Mike Worthing was great this week. He actually went out there and mowed some of that ditch for me with the uh. With the brush hog.
Oh, good.
So we wanna treat it a little.
We need to keep that clean so that.
Yeah, now that's just, that's a debris catcher. And so that's the problem with the borrowed ditch. But we're gonna go out there and finish working on that. Uh by the way, we we built at a very, very cheap cost, we built a. A fire tender, uh water buffalo. We got a four hundred gallon water buffalo from George that was just surplus. We put that on a trailer which the engineering department purchased. Matt has got it set up so that it pumps water now. What that it means is that when uh we are out doing burning of borrowed ditches. We have a four hundred gallon water tender to go with it. It'll all be in one wagon and so that we can. Not be on the front page, Iron County starts a fire. That's the only condition I have about with Matt. I said, the only. Only thing I ask you is don't become a newspaper article if it's unless it's positive. But otherwise, we do not wanna be the fire starter.
That's good, good.
So.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Rich. Appreciate it. Let's see, where are we at? Um.
Public Works, but I believe Bruce.
Bruce is out, so commission. Uh let's let's um. Should you went with you went with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Colonel Matheson, would you like to take a minute now? We've got a little time and then and then Mike and I'll report, give our reports, but if you'd like to take some time and.
I do.
Uh Colonel Matheson would like to address a topic with us and and this is kinda spur of the moment, but we're happy to give you some time.
Thank you. I'm on, I am on mic. This is a propitious moment, not only for me, but also for the county. The process has been ongoing for about eighty-three years. And that's to try and capture some of the heritage and the benefit that we have in this county and be able to share it. So I've provided the council with a proposal of sorts. This is the first introduction. I think it'll be one of the greatest things we could do for the county and for yourselves as well. For the benefit of any that might be outside, I'm going to read the proposal that I've given to each of you. And then if there are any questions, I'll make some comments. The Southwestern Heritage Association proposes a joint venture with participating civic and iron county entities. To create a regional heritage museum and public venue to be wholly administered by the appropriate governing entity. Southwestern History Heritage Association would assume the role of facilitating. Promoting, organizing staffing and otherwise administering the curation and interpretation of all supporting resources. We believe that the effort will be more than sufficient. Self-sustained would rely on the donations and endowments for the acquisition, preservation, restoration of artifacts skills is necessary. In essence, um excuse me, that appears to be mine. I thought I had it off.
You're good.
My apologies. Six years ago, we established a foundation with uh with Lee. Thank you very much. As the attorney, we have a five oh one three C operation that has been going for those number of years. Uh Frank Nichols, myself and Roy Sneltzner in the propitious opportunity of uh chairing that operation. I just returned from a two-year military assignment and so I'm back in the traces trying to do this. Uh I haven't had the opportunity to meet some of you, Commissioner Blake, and my apologies. I'd like to do that sometime. My background is such that I have a deep investment in Iron County and I do not intend to change it. For many years, I was the Utah Director for the Old Spanish Trail Association National Historic, eighteen years as the history. For the Iron County History Association and about twenty-two years at S U U with the aviation program and now I'd like to do something worthwhile. That worthwhile is that I'm not coming to you to ask for anything other than providing you with the awareness of the intent and the operation. I anticipate that this operation and the opportunity for Iron County. Will be sufficient that the donations will take care of itself. What I am concerned with is we need the acquisition of approximately thirty to fifty acres of land. When you have an opportunity to look at the individual donations, you'll see that some of those would include such items as three hundred and fifty-seven restored wagons. Over two hundred steam engine, gas engines. We have uh donations from uh gun collections to all of the things that are listed. I think there are three pages. If you kinda look down on uh and I don't know that you have it, so I will refer to it for just a moment.
Does Frank, Frank had talked a one time about putting this out at Iron Springs. Is that still the thought or?
No, Frank is uh is part of the ownership, the committee on this. Frank was, could not have been any more forthcoming. Uh we had the acres, we had the land. The problem we don't have, the problem we do have, Paul, is we don't have access. We need a venue that will be facilitate the community. Our target is someplace in the Utah Val- uh Cedar City Valley. I've met with the mayor and with the commission for Enic. They have enough acreage out there. If we can work the political arrangements and the legal arrangements. They have access to property that they have leaned. I think they're willing to participate to that degree and allow us to use it. That would work out ideal.
Just to interrupt, there there are. There are some developers out in the in the Enic area that own large swaths of land that have helped donate land to the ice rink. And to the veterans, so Utah veterans, uh veterans. What's their official name? Yeah, and they've donated land to the um to the land for that project that they wanna build. So there's a, and and maybe you've already explored that, but.
I have.
Have you? Okay. But they're, I think they're anxious to um to, they've got so much land, they're anxious to donate it to causes like this, to bring people there, so.
And and one of the things that is missing is this is not an attempt to simply provide a museum, to provide another venue, to one of those other things. We're talking about a destination for people that have car clubs, for uh trail clubs, for meeting places, to have car. Venues, to have motorcycle clubs, come in, pioneer activities, those. Uh this has gotten so big that I hesitate to even allow myself to get rid of it. The opportunity and the awareness is that we have so many, the SUP, the DUP, all of these people have materials, including the commission, that you're aware of, that we have storage. Uh the collective hard point of that is we don't have a place to put it. So if we had a place to put it, that takes care of the museum aspects and the preservation of artifacts. The attempt is to enlarge this so it includes a community activity, a venue. That is centralized so that we don't have to pick and choose and go off and find small areas and. And nickpicking on the church and their facilities. We would have a centralized countywide. Association governed and working with volunteers on a regular work basis. Uh to expand that just slightly, and I hate to get too far ahead, is part of the vision is to have this an ongoing working site, not uncommon to. Uh like Trolley Square where we had areas that have gunsmithing, they have lapidary, they have wagon making, they have. All of the individual elements supported by local people who provide the labor and the instruction and the museum and the protection. And the whole thing just rolls into one community-directed effort, not necessarily with anyone that is paid for it, not with anyone that needs to. Be receiving money for it. We would take care of ourselves. The donations that we have and the interest that we have right now are staggering. They really are.
Donations meaning like towards a new building, the buildings?
No, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get clarity. The limitation that we have right now is we need a footprint and then we can turn the tigers loose. We have a donation of sixteen thousand square foot of high bay floor space. All we have to do is find a place to put it. We have donations of three hundred and fifty-seven wagons that are fully restored.
You've got somebody willing to donate sixteen thousand?
Already have donated. We're not talking wishes. We have over two hundred gas engines and steam engines, three hundred tractors that are looking for a place. They just need a place to shelter. Once you go to the small things like the gun collection, the lapidary, those are somewhat internal. So beyond that, it's it's a much larger, much larger approach. We have a number of charitable donations that have already been pledged. We have charitable and remainder endowments. That exceed multi-million dollars where I'd share that with you in person, but. Basically, I think my purpose and my intent. For the public side of it is to do introduce an awareness that we want to do, we have the resources, we have the ambition. We think the need is there. We're just looking for a coordination and I'm. And I'm a customer, it's a military guy of going and saying, I want you to look good. I want the county to look good. And to do that, you need to be aware of what we're doing so that we can accept your direction if we need it and we can provide the balance to make this thing work in our behalf.
One of the nice things about the property out by Enic, it's visible by the freeway, that's huge.
It is.
Right, having that visibility, people, oh, what's that, and they pull off and.
And we also, I believe, have the support of the community. The attitude, the venue is significantly different than Cedar City. Cedar City being adequate, but they're far more cosmopolitan, far more business oriented. We're looking for something to spread heritage, attitude, history, those kind of things. So that when people come to Iron County, they don't just go to the breaks, they don't just go to the ski. They have a place that they can come and find out about our history, that's good. But on the other hand of it, it allows us to preserve the items that we have. Within short, I was told, and I fairly believe, that within three years, three generations, let me put that, three generations, nobody will remember anyone in this room. The only thing we can leave is either the relationships, which are important, but we need a place that we can protect the heritage that is otherwise being sold for a pittance. And that's the only goal that we have. And once that's advertised, for instance, I'll take myself. We have a, in my father's endowment, over two hundred and eighty-seven rifles, pistols, shotguns that are magnificent. People are scrambling to try and get those to break it apart. My answer is no, we want to have it in Iron County where it represents the people that this, that carries. So we have a good group, we're working on it. I want to be available to, uh, answer any questions at any time. If you have anything to go with it, I'd appreciate that. I would like to acknowledge the cooperation that I've had so far. And John has been fantastic in allowing me to come, introducing me and giving this option, and I think it's worthwhile.
Oh, I, I really appreciate it. I, you know, I, my family in fact has some items that we've discussed, you know, what, where's, you know, things that have been passed down from great, great and great grandparents that have, that have landed, you know, solely basically with my mom now. And then, you know, it's, and we've talked about, is this really doing service in a cedar chest somewhere? Or is there a place where it could be preserved? And we've, yeah, I mean, this is something that.
Yeah. Well, you're reading my mail. I don't think that, I personally, I don't have a lot of longevity. If I'm made one in five, ten years. But I have items that need to be preserved and I don't have a place to put them. They either get separated, or they get sold for cash, they disappear, and with that goes our history. That's simply my motivation and thank you for sharing that.
No, that's, I, I personally, I mean, whatever, i- if, if there's politics that need to be navigated, I mean, that's certainly something we could, we, we've got a great relationship really with all of the entities.
That's what we're looking for.
I'd be happy to.
And once again, uh, uh, yeah, I don't want to get excited because it's, I'm very excitable when I get into this. As a professional, as a commander, I know that you find good people, you turn them loose to do the job. All I'm saying here is this is the proposal, we've got good people. We want you to be aware of it, we want the input, we don't want to make mistakes. We want to have this available so that this will seamlessly work to the benefit of ourselves. And I think if I were to ask, which I'm not, Paul, I appreciate your attitude as well. We're not asking for anything but your awareness and help in securing the property at that point, I think we're ready to go.
What is your, Al, what's your, um, you mind sharing your cell phone?
Say again?
I think I have your cell phone, but can you share it with me?
Uh, six oh two, nine hundred, seven zero, seven one. And I had asked, and, and I think appropriate, remember, there's nothing here that is hidden. You talked about transparency. But I do have people who have commitments and, and who have interests that I need to protect. If I can get on a telephone to any one of you and just give you the, that side of it, so you have a little bit of reality to see what it is we're working with, that will go beyond what I'm trying to.
I.
Without divulging.
I know of one, one developer that might be very interested in working with you and so.
And we will.
And so I'll, I'll get you on the phone with, with him.
Uh, I want to reemphasize, we're not asking for somebody to make money. We're not asking for somebody to give money. I've got more stuff donated and given. All I need is somebody to get out of the way and let us do this.
But you need the pro, you need some property.
I need the property, I can't do anything until I get.
So, is the sixteen thousand square feet, and, and I've heard Frank talk about this wagon collection, which is unbelievable. I'm, that in and of itself would be a destination.
Absolutely.
Visit, for somebody to come visit Iron County just to see those wagons. But, and it's really exciting because I, when Frank told me about this a couple of years ago, it's really incredible what they've got and, and what we have an opportunity to get. Um, is that sixteen thousand square feet enough to house what you're talking about or?
It's what we have to house. The problem we get into is if we go to build, then that's money.
Right.
Right now I have the stuff. I'm going to share this with you, if you please look, and I'm, I'll pull it up and give you the, the best I can. I'd like you to swipe to the left.
John might be able to put that on the screen, um.
If you swipe to the left, that is an existing building that has been donated.
Oh wow, it's beautiful.
Is it a?
Colonel, could you elaborate?
Is it a metal building?
What's that?
Is it a metal building? So it'd have to be dismantled and then re, refabricated or re-erected?
Reconstructed, reconstructed, it's, uh, three hundred by two hundred with a thirty-six foot height. You can see the condition, you can see the use, if any of you would like to see it. That is not a request, that's not anything, it is a reality. I own that building to, I mean, the association owns that.
Where is this building?
Sir?
Where is the building?
You're gonna get me, aren't you? It is the, uh.
You're not gonna say it's the last one?
Lava Cove, when you go out on highway, uh, old ninety-one, if you go into Santa Clara, at the top of the hill, there's a big bubble. Beyond that is, uh, Snow Canyon High School, elementary, the rest of them. Um, don't want to, the, the public forum, but the answer is that has been donated to this function. And it is coming down, if you noticed in one of the pictures, the cranes are up there. They're building a new facility. When that one is completed, the school moves into it, then they demolish the other.
So it's a metal, it looks like a metal building with the stucco cladding on the outside.
Yep.
Interesting, that's good. And you feel like that building there would house a lot of what you're talking about? And for, you, you feel like that would house a lot of your collection?
It would, it's the best that I've come up with.
Okay.
Sixteen thousand foot.
That's pretty good size.
That's great.
Yep, that's good.
It's exciting.
Once again, the approach to the building, and I don't want to get on that, is the building would house a series of venues within it that would be individual museums, separate from each other, but held as a collective. When you close the door at night, everybody's protected. When somebody wants to come in there, it's an operational. Now, the outside shelter would be for tractors and wagons and engines and steam engines and motor cars and all the rest of it. That's why the area becomes important because that ground space and the covered cabanas take care of the outside. Think of here in Parowan, when we drive out and you see the, the place out there where that has the agricultural items. Multiply that by a hundred.
Right, right. It wouldn't have the freeway access or the freeway visibility, but I, I wonder if the fairgrounds would have room for something like this.
It would, there are so many options out, we, as a county, as a human, if we can find the thing, we can make it work. I'm thankful for the time and your courtesy, this is a, a first step in a long.
I've heard of this before, this, this, this collection.
It's been ongoing.
Frank's, Frank's talked to me about this.
Frank's talked to me about it as well.
It really is exciting, yeah.
Familiar with the concept and what's there, so.
Well, now, uh, let me give a, a plug in. Frank is a good friend, we've been friends forever. And his operation out there is, is perfect, the venue and what he wants to do in the Old Spanish Trail, the Mormon Betrayal, all of those things going through that area. The only thing he doesn't have is regional access to schools, to activity, to people.
Sure.
That, that will come to that place without having to drive sixteen to twenty miles to get out.
Right.
Plus, it needs to be civic-centered such that it carries the civic attitude. So we're looking for heritage, we're looking for preservation, we're looking for an opportunity.
You're looking for twelve, thirty to thirty-five acres, is that what you're saying?
Uh, that's what the, we have, the architects that we talked to are talking a minimum. The target is fifty, the functional is forty. If we just build the museum, then we're down to the twenty. And, uh, yes, we can make it work and then we have no reservation about commercial development. Somebody wants to pick up and run with part of this thing, we'll partnership with them. We're not, uh, nothing. Thank you for letting me get this off, Paul.
This is exciting, thank you.
Say again.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate your courtesy.
Appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're awesome.
There's any questions, do you have the number, I think I gave it public.
Yep, I've got your number, thank you. And I'll be, I'll be contacting you. Um, Commissioner Blake, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, I'll just run quick. Uh, I had the opportunity last week, week before, whenever it was. Uh, I spent a good chunk of the day with Jeff Razor from Senator Curtis's office. Uh, he just wanted to come and spend a day and just familiarize himself with the area. So we, uh, we just took a tour around the county, met with, uh, most, you know, our, our local elected officials here in Parowan. Uh, he just wanted to put eyeballs on things so that he's familiar. So we, we hit a chunk of the county and he's gonna come back again to do more. Um, Restaurant Tax Board, we met, uh, for a long time the other day. We're, uh, revamping our application process for the upcoming grant application cycle. Uh, it's, I think it's just gonna be a better process, there's gonna be more accountability for, uh, for the applicants to really prove that they're, that they qualify. It's just, it's gonna be a more stringent.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
So, I was on my UAC call that I'm, that I attend every quarter, whatever it is.
Right.
And Brandy Grace, the director, was asking me about the, you know, how they're giving, you know, some, some money if counties increase the TRT taxes.
Right.
And, and Maria had said she wants to wait.
Right.
And, and, and so, is that still kind of the thought? Is it, because they want to wait till the, maybe the end of the year?
Yeah, and, and the reason behind that is the.
It's everything's happened so fast.
Is the, is the hotels are basically, you know, they, they just got hit with a state TRT type of attacks. And the, the, our hoteliers are saying, we're seeing the impact of that and we're, we're in danger of eclipsing Washington County's hotel prices. Um, that's the biggest concern. You know, it's, it's not necessarily our concern on the county side, it's that coming from our hoteliers and restaurant folks who are the ones that are actually seeing the, either the benefit or the, the opposite in their operation.
They asked, Brandy asked me about it at that meeting and I told her that we were looking at waiting and, so.
That's their recommendation.
It might be good for Maria or you, or you and Maria to contact Brandy and kind of talk to her about that.
Yeah, we could do that.
Just to let her know our thoughts.
Sure.
I know that the money we would forfeit goes to EMS and I think we're covered on that.
We're covered, we don't have any, yeah, we don't have any county-related EMS.
Okay.
We're okay there. I mean, our, and, and I think what we decided was that increase would be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually if we were to enact that, which we, it, I don't know that that would go very far anyway with anything, but it's, yeah, but we have EMS, we don't have county EMS, so. Gold Cross takes care of us and their services are pretty solid.
So, search and rescue with that, and that's, that's funded a lot by the state, isn't it?
Search and, I, you know what, search and rescue, they, they work on grants. We fund search and rescue to some.
Right.
Degree. Uh, Canaraville usually kicks in with search and rescue because of, uh, because of Canara Falls. You know, that's probably their, their busiest area and Canaraville reimburses us for the usage of search and rescue for that area.
I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, no, that's certainly, yeah, it's something we need to consider. Uh, so there'll be a difference, you know, when we get to the, get to the application process this fall, that'll look different, but I think it'll be a really good thing. Uh, Maria and I met with President Benson at the university just to discuss, uh, the athletic department improvements that we've already approved and to make sure that we're still, we're coordinating with that. Um, uh, we had a meeting with staff with, talked about the shooting range with myself, Maria, John. Uh, Sam was with us and Bryce, uh, to look at some options for the shooting range moving forward. And I think we've kind of, we, we, we may have a plan we need to talk about.
And I told you Frank was willing to donate more land, right?
Yes.
He said, hey, if the master plan, I offered to give a couple acres, but if the whole master plan is such that you guys want to do something major, I'm willing to help.
Right. Um, and then just the fire, I mean, I've been on the phone pretty constantly with both George and Spencer, our county fire marshal. Uh, Spencer, in fact, last night was released from the Pine Valley incident to be back locally. Uh, George is meeting today with, uh, Canaraville. Uh, they, they don't really have an evacuation plan in place, that, we're not, we're not in danger of Canaraville being overrun, but it's like, you know what, we probably oughta just start that planning process, so they're working on that today. Uh, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. I've got a few things, um, Rich laughed, but, uh, Reed had sent out a letter months ago about the Modena and Lund water systems, Union Pacific, I brought this up before, but, uh, Justin Wayman called me last week. He is an attorney that represents one of the water users in Lund and, um, and he, and I explained to him what we were doing. I've been talking to a, a gentleman named Rod Carroll, he's over the real estate division for Union Pacific Railroad. Really nice guy, um, really workable. They're basically going to, the way it looks, they're looking to deed they can give. They have a, and I brought this up before, but there's an, some kind of a eighteen thirty congressional act where they can donate a road to a county or a state entity. And they want to basically get rid of the wells they own, get out of that business because of liability. Um, so they basically will create a road where those two wells are and they'll give us the roads and they, those roads just happen to have wells in the middle of the road, so. And they're, they're willing to put water rights into the wells for these people because they own some extra water rights. And so it, there's only about, I think, six homes in Lund that use that water. They do have an existing piping system that's operable and working. Uh, Rod asked, and I talked to Rich about maybe going out there with Justin and I. He, they want a li, just a little map of the water system so they can deed that over properly to Iron County. We wouldn't accept any liability, it'd be like a net, net, net lease where the water user would be responsible for the maintenance, the, the, the quality of the water, the water rights, everything. And the power, we would just own it, but they would have all the liability and responsibility to maintain it. And that would be true for Modena. Modena's a little different. Um, I drove out to Modena and had a meeting with a lot of the residents out there and they don't have a water system, a water, a piping system. They just have the, the well that they can and fill up containers, tanks and trailers and, and they take them to their homes and pump them into their home. And it's really good water, it's a really good well. Um, and they've got more users in Modena, they've got fewer users in Lund, but anyway, we're working through that. Um, Justin Wayman is going to do some kind of a, a water usage agreement with those two entities in the county uh, because he's representing those folks out there, so working on that, um.
Do we feel like we're gonna need to set up like water districts with those folks or not?
I don't think so. I, I don't think there's enough users.
They're small enough?
They're small enough, I don't think we need to. Um, they, Modena had a water district, but it's defunct, it's gone, it's, and, um.
Are they currently using the Union Pacific wells right now anyways?
Yes, yes, they are. And there's a, there's a gentleman out, I don't, his name doesn't come to mind right now, but he's real nice and he's, he knows a lot about it. He's engaged, he knows, he, but that well needs some, that well does need some work. And any, any maintenance and any expenses will be borne by those users.
Users.
Mm-hmm, so, they're working on that. Uh, speaking of the railroad, we're, they were getting really close to getting approval by Horrocks engineers to do the, they're gonna bore underneath the railway line to run the sewer. I believe it's a, what is it, a ten, I think it's a ten inch sewer line. I believe it's a, what is it, a ten, I think it's a ten inch sewer line, uh, out to aviation way to, to, uh, supply sewage for our new jail facility. I think they're really close on getting that approval. There was one little hiccup they needed to clarify for Union Pacific. We continue to have our jail meetings. Um, they've got a lot of the bid packages done. Uh, it was really good timing with the tariffs because the tariffs scared a lot of projects. Uh, a lot of projects were put on hold and so a lot of subcontractors were hungry and, uh, they got a lot of bids where they were maybe expecting three and four bids, they got ten and twelve. And so that drives the price down and I think it's, it, it would just, the stars aligned for the county and that was just perfect timing as they did some of those bid, bid packages. I think it saved us a fair amount, maybe five million, up to five million dollars in some of those packages. Don't quote me exactly on that, but I think it's close to that. Um, the, one thing that Cedar City's working on, I, uh, the mayor, Mayor Green, um, has formed a, a, a water committee and asked me to serve on that. We meet every Wednesday and basically what they're doing, they've got, uh, they've always worked good with the district, but Cedar City has come to the realization that it's probably best to let the water district, the Central Island County Water Conservancy District, be the purveyor of water, go out and develop. And I've always thought this was the way to go for years because what we had, we had, we had Cedar City, we had the water district, we had ENEC, and we had developers all bidding against each other for water rights and driving those prices up to astronomical levels. And my idea back then was, why don't we just have Paul Monroe by the water and he supplies the water to everybody at, at, at a wholesale rate? And so I think, uh, that's really the direction now that, that, that Mayor Green is looking at going. Well, so we're meeting with, uh, with Paul Monroe, their engineer, myself and some other, th- their engineers and we're talking about, one of the, one of the biggest, the scariest things in, in the Cedar Valley is the, the, the pressures in those lines going from Quichapah feeding those tanks, those high tanks up above Cross Hollow and Home Depot and those. Their water pressure in those lines to push that up that high is three hundred and seventy-eight PSI. And you get, you get somebody down working on that pipe and it, it blows up and you're killing people. It's, it's really, really dangerous. So they're trying to work with the district to build some more tanks, to try to lower that pressure down because if we lost one of those lines, or Cedar City lost one of those lines, it'd be catastrophic for water supply, um, because it'd take a while to get it fixed. And so, um, that's something we're working on. I think it's a really good positive step they're taking, realizing that the district is probably a little better at developing water sources, getting money from government entities to help with that. And so it's, it's, um, uh, uh, so it's been, it's been a good thing that's, that's, uh, evolving there. Uh, I was invited, I was on vacation last week, so I couldn't go, but there was a sheet meeting, uh, in, um, Fillmore with Celeste, Representative Malloy, Stephanie Hill and a lot of the producers, Scott Stubbs, uh, Carson Jorgensen, a lot of those producers.
I think Ken went.
Ken went.
And I tried to zoom in the whole time and was never accepted.
I was going to zoom in, well, I was going to zoom in and then they said it wouldn't be available last minute, so.
Yeah, so I, yeah, that's...
So.
Yeah, anyway, because I tried to zoom in and it never did accept me in, so that makes sense why it didn't ever let me in.
They sent out a notice last minute that they would not have it online. I was going to do the same from California, but, um, anyway, they're trying to, it's, it's just a, a real, our, our sheep producers are in trouble financially. The prices are so low that they're, they're, too many more, they can't survive too many more years. And then we're relying on our food production coming from overseas and it, it's a, really a national security issue. And, and the cattle industry is probably five years behind that. So they're trying to get the attention of the administration and, um, and fix that. And kudos to Stephanie Hill, our school board member, and, and Scott Stubbs and the, all those, you know, Farm Bureau and, uh, I don't know all the, all the different names totally, but I've been involved a little bit and, and they're doing some great work there to help that industry, so. But that is my report, sorry we're over. I can't see that clock.
Fifty?
But, uh, we'll take a, let's take a ten minute break and then we'll, we'll, um, go ahead and resume our meeting at about, let's go about ten twenty-five, so.
All right, looks like we're ready to go with our ten o'clock meeting. It's ten, about ten thirty-four. Sorry, we're starting a little bit late. We'll begin with agenda, agenda item number one, public hearing discussion and possible approval of our proposed agriculture protection area according to provisions of Utah Code seventeen dash forty-one. Approximately one hundred and seventy-one point five acres located in two areas. One, fifty-two point two-five acres, including parcels D dash six-two-four dash one, and forty-nine point one-five acres in D dash six-two-four slash zero point seven-five acres. D dash six-two-one dash one dash one nine point five-nine acres. And D six-two-one dash one dash one dash zero-two point four-five acres. And D six-two-one dash one dash one dash zero-one point four-eight acres within the description outlined in the agenda. And the applicant is the grand Webster in Reed.
My commissioners.
It's like we really drew a crowd this morning.
I already know how I'm gonna make that motion.
A lot of people concerned about this item, so.
Just say what Paul said.
Exactly. It's already been read into the record by the chair.
We'll run through this quickly as we can. Don't need to spend a lot of time on this, I don't think, for the benefit of the public. I don't know if there are those engaged online. We need to go through a detailed explanation, but maybe I'll just do a brief summary. And what an agricultural protection area is. We haven't had an application for one for quite some time, and so it's probably good to review because we had a significant change in the ordinances in county code in twenty nineteen that changed how agricultural protection areas are created and what the criteria is. And so we will just kind of go through that a little bit. But the process changed a little bit in that it requires greater notification. We have to do two postings and two notifications. The postings include the recommendations from the Planning Commission and the Agricultural Advisory Board. And the first notice and posting didn't include that. It told that those things would be occurring when the Planning Commission meeting was and when this meeting for a public hearing was held. And then we did another posting where we sent notifications out to property owners within a thousand feet of the proposals to indicate what the results of the Planning Commission and the Advisory Board's recommendations were. And so that's all kind of new to the statute. What a benefit, what it does is, and we did create an industrial protection area, you'll recall, with the Utah Iron here a couple of years ago. And that was under the new statute. And so essentially what it does under the benefits listed here of a protection area is that local government cannot change the regulation of what they do, their zoning or the zoning regulations, without their consent so that they can continue to operate the way that they do in normal practice. That's really one of the biggest things. The second is that they have no nuisance complaints when they're practicing normal agricultural practices. Their practices are then not considered a nuisance. So somebody can't complain about, well, they can complain, but they can't file a formal complaint about things, you know, that normally occur with agriculture when they're operating normally. Also, it requires notification to adjacent developments that they have to put it on their plat when they subdivide that they're developing next to an agricultural protection area, and so that becomes on their plat. And then the last one is that government cannot condemn property in an agricultural protection area. They're protected from eminent domain. So those are a number of things that are the benefits for an agricultural protection area. The statute really provides a mechanism to try to preserve agriculture and allow people to continue to operate agricultural practices. So that's kind of the summary of what an agricultural protection area does. This is the location of the two properties. It's one application owned by the same person, but at two different locations. You can see here in Cedar Valley. You can see the, the two areas here. Just on the south side of twenty-eight-hundred North, which is the one hundred and nineteen acre parcel, and then just west, southwest of Fife Town in the Cedar Valley there. This, just close-ups of those two parcels. This one is, is a little bit different in that the application was for the property in red, for forty-nine point one-five acres. But, but by description and by legal, by the parcel number. But then when the map came, it had this additional property, which are these properties in yellow that were in the map, but not identified by parcel number or acreage. And so what we, we did was amended the application through the Planning Commission's review and the Advisory Board's review to amend. And in this process, we have the ability to amend an application and include additional properties, just like we did with the agricultural protection or the industrial protection area. Took some out, put some in, you know, you can amend that. And, and so part of the concern of this application was these additional four properties here that were not in the original application, which then consists of fifty-two point two-five acres. Part of the challenge with this property in this application was the property to the northeast is zoned R-five, this is a zoning map, and R-one-half. The properties down at the bottom to the left there, west-southwest, is zoned A-twenty. And so it met the criteria, and we'll go through the criteria in just a little bit. But as you can see here, part of this property that was included in the map and what they wanted included in the application were properties across the road that they use for staging areas where they mix their feed, where they have some corrals, things, but there, there are one-half current zoning, which is not a zone that allows agriculture, and R-five. So the original application was for forty-nine acres plus the one-nineteen. We amended that to include those other four parcels to add three-point-one acres for a total of one-seventy-one on six parcels instead of just two parcels of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight acres. And so that's the major modification. The ordinance requires that properties be a minimum of five acres. These parcels that are less than five acres would be included in the overall, so the whole thing is more than five acres. And both the Planning Commission and the Advisory Board felt that that met the statute of contiguous acreage in that each parcel is not that big, but contiguous parcels, acreage in the overall application would still qualify. We kind of went through this, the application process. These are just statutory things that we spent time with the Planning Commission, the Advisory Board going through for, to identify their criteria. We kind of talked about these. These are just the statutory provisions in state code that, that reflect what we reviewed in the application. Just more specific language, I'm gonna kind of just jump through some of that.
So does Webster own all of the, even the four lots as well?
Yes. Well, his family, his son, and he and his son.
And even though they're not five acres, as long as they're contiguous with the other, that's okay?
It's, in combination, it's a five-acre creation of an agricultural protection area. So the review criteria under statute seventy-one, seventeen forty-one through oh-five includes these five things, and we'll go through those specifically. Whether or not the land is currently being used for agriculture, obviously it is and has been for a long time. Number two is the one that raised the most concern and question is whether or not the land is currently zoned for agricultural use. The land that's A-twenty is not in question. The land that's R-five and R-one-half has been used for agricultural practice, but we would consider these properties to be legal non-conforming parcels, allowing the uses that established by contiguous, continuous historical use over many years. But the problem that is with R-one-half and R-five is that the animal numbers that are assigned to those zones, the animals they have there far exceed the numbers that are allowed in that zone. And so we don't believe that, that it qualifies for an agricultural protection area for R-one-half and R-five because those numbers, they could continue to practice that use because they're pre-existing non-conforming. But to create an agricultural protection area in that area, we don't think, feel that it meets the statutory requirement that it's zoned for agriculture. And so what we did at the Planning Commission and what the Advisory Board did was they took the consideration that the proposed land should be rezoned to R-A-twenty to accommodate the agricultural uses that would be viable with an agricultural protection area. So the way that works is, and I'll come back to that a little bit, but in order to, to not just dismiss the application and consider it to not qualify, the recommendations were that we would approve it contingent upon the property being rezoned and that we would have that rezone application, and the applicant is fine with that. They realize that that really needs to happen. And so we'll have that on the next Planning Commission agenda for our July meeting, and it'll be back here in July.
I didn't have time to really digest where this is. Whereabouts is this?
It's just west of.
Let me go back to the maps.
Just west of Fife Town?
Yeah, it's actually not contiguous as well, so.
The upper parcel, the fifty-two acres, that's Fife Town, just to the right of it. Okay, the other acreage is twenty-eight-hundred North. And, you know, there's some five-acre parcels out there. This is twenty-eight-hundred west, right here. And forty-one-hundred west, where the road comes across here and turns and goes up. So this one is not a problem, but this one is the one that's zoned R-five.
So that one will have to be rezoned.
So that's the one that.
We can approve it, but then.
So we would approve it contingent upon the property being rezoned, which would come back to the Planning Commission.
To vote on separately, or can we do it as one, and then with the contingency to come back and rezone?
I think we could just approve it contingent upon the rezone. You'll approve the rezone back here at the July meeting. Planning Commission will have it on their meeting, and we'll have it on the following meeting, and then this can go into effect because the property had been rezoned. That's the way that the Planning Commission and the Advisory Board recommended. So whether or not the land is viable for agricultural use, determine that it was, to the extent of the proposed agricultural improvements that are there meets the criteria, and anticipated trends in agriculture to help evaluate those. Those are the things that we look at. We also look at considerations of objections or removal of property. There were no objections. There were several people who called in and had questions about what it meant and what they should do and how it would affect them, but no one objected and no one asked for any property to be added to it or taken out.
And you probably said this, it's going to, the plan is for the zoning to go to R-A-twenty or A-twenty?
R-A-twenty. And we'll come back to that. So the Advisory Board and the Planning Commission recommendation was that the, the project and property be approved for an agricultural protection area, that they accept it and modify it to include the additional small lot properties and that the property be rezoned to R-A-twenty for the properties that are currently zoned R-five and R-one-half. So that's really what we're looking at at this point. We are looking for a planning, or the Planning Commission made a recommendation for approval as well as the agricultural protection or the Agricultural Advisory Board. And so we're looking for a commission action to approve, approve with modifications, or to deny, or to just continue for further discussion with consideration of contingent approval for rezoning for the portions that are zoned R-one-half and R-five, which is fifty-two point two-five acres, until that property had been rezoned to R-A-twenty, which would be at your meeting a month from now, the second meeting in July. Are there questions about what agricultural protection areas are, what they do? One thing I didn't mention is that they run for twenty years. They automatically renew in twenty years if the commission doesn't take action to determine that they should be modified or something should happen to them. So we review those occasionally through the Planning Commission, and as we get new applications for development, we try to evaluate whether or not those properties are in an agricultural protection area because they would need to come out at that point to be developed because then, especially when we rezone property, they would no longer qualify for agricultural protection. So that's how they work. And these are, that's the application. Are there any questions?
Nope. Chair?
We do, we do need, I didn't have a slide here unless I went past it. We do need a planning commission, or we do need a public hearing. I'm sorry, I didn't have a slide for that. But we do need a planet, we do need a public hearing on this. I'm sorry, I left the slide out. So we do need to have a public hearing, take comments on that.
I, Chair will declare a public hearing open for agenda number one. Seeing nobody to talk about that, we'll close the public hearing and.
And then we can take action at your discretion.
All right, I would move for approval of proposed agriculture protection area.
of a proposed agriculture protection area according to the provisions of Utah Code seventeen dash forty-one for the description that the Commissioner Cousins read into the, to the minutes when this started with the caveat of being contingent on rezoning of the subject property to R-A-twenty, which is fifty-two point two-five acres.
Did I cover it, Reed?
Yeah, fifty-two point two-five acres. The properties that are currently zoned R-one-half and R-five would be rezoned to R-A-twenty.
I'll second that. And so it's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Reed. Next is item number two, public comments. Those that like to make a public comment are welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to agenda item number three, ratification of a lot line adjustment between the Iron County Jail property located at twenty-one thirty-six North Main and the Iron County Public Safety Building, Cedar City APN B dash eleven ninety-six dash forty-seven and B dash eleven ninety-six dash forty-six.
So this was an action taken to kind of clarify the boundaries of the jail and the public safety building. The commissioners, I visited with each of the commissioners individually last week and went ahead and signed that deed and recorded it, those deeds. And so that did convey the property. This is a ratification of that and it's, and perhaps possible conjunction with the future sale of the existing jail. So I would move for approval of the ratification of a lot line adjustment between the Iron County Jail property located at twenty-one thirty-six North Main and the Iron County Public Safety Building, which is Cedar, Assessor Parcel Number B dash eleven ninety-six dash four-seven and B dash eleven ninety-six dash four-six.
I second that. It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Number four, presentation of possible approval for stipend pay for the SWAT commanders. Sheriff Carpenter.
Good morning Commissioners. Sergeant Nate Williams from Cedar PD has been the SWAT team commander for the past six and a half years. Has recently stepped down from that position. The task force had a unanimous vote to appoint Lieutenant Sean Peterson to that position. Where Sean is a salaried employee. And with this additional workload, we thought it would be appropriate to ask the commission for a stipend for him while he serves as the SWAT team commander. Basically, what they're doing is four hours of training once a week for each month. And so four times a month. And then whatever SWAT call-outs that came out to. So in looking at that, I think a fair stipend would be somewhere between five hundred dollars a month and seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. That'd be an increase of about six thousand to nine thousand dollars a year to serve as a SWAT team commander.
And that covered, like in lieu of any overtime, that would cover callouts and training?
Callouts and training. And because he's not, you know, because he's a salaried employee.
Sure.
He doesn't rate overtime pay.
Sure.
That's why we're looking at a stipend to try to make it a little bit more fair for him. So we'd ask for your approval of whatever you thought was right, between five hundred and seven fifty. Five hundred would basically just cover just training. If you figured it out on.
Just training, no incidents?
Right. If you figured it out on an hourly basis. Covered it for just training. That's why I was looking at that range of five hundred to seven fifty for the callouts as well.
I think the, I don't have the number of callouts on the top of my head, but just speaking anecdotically, the SWAT team is busy.
I'll give you an example. When I was a SWAT team commander, I was SWAT team commander for seven and a half years when I was the chief here in Paralon. And at that time, we were averaging about five callouts a year. Here last year, we were over twenty-three callouts. So it's jumped dramatically. And, you know, it ebbs and flows with every year. Sometimes it's a little more, sometimes it's a little less. But we're, our numbers are up there to, you know, a couple, couple of callouts a month, generally speaking.
Yeah, I mean, so when I, back in the day when I worked for Iron County Ambulance, which was a long time ago, you know, we'd go, I mean, if you got a call a day, you're pretty busy. If you got two calls a day, it was crazy. And they're averaging about twenty calls a day now. And I think, I mean, I could see the, I mean, just in conjunction, you know, I was involved with the SWAT team at its inception. You know, I was the first SWAT team medic. And we didn't, I mean, we got a call out now and again. And now, I mean, it's really consistent. I think, and I think the job of the commander is, it's a new thing than back in the day when it was more of a volunteer service.
It's absolutely integral to the safety and security of the county anymore, you know, anymore with the guns, the amount of guns that are involved with drug cases and whatnot. We're using SWAT contact teams to help serve warrants and different things like that so we can make sure that we're doing it safely and protecting, you know, the officers and deputies and the people that we're serving the warrants against to make sure that we can do it in as professional and safe a manner as possible. And, you know, make sure that we have the proper level of force to deter any type of violence. And, you know, it's, it takes a lot of planning, it takes a lot of time, a lot of resources. But it's invaluable and so far we've been very blessed to be able to do all those in a safe manner without any negative incidents. So I think that speaks volumes for the professionalism of the team.
Just doing the math, so that'd be about, if I'm not, if I'm correct, that'd be about four dollars and sixty-eight cents an hour raise per hour, right? Does that sound right?
I haven't, I haven't looked at that.
So if you took a hundred and sixty hours in a month, divide it, you know, and divide that into the seven fifty, that'd be about four sixty-eight.
Yeah.
Five hundred divided by one sixty, that'd be about three, three dollars.
So what we were looking at was just specifically to the SWAT team commander role. So if he's no longer the SWAT team commander, he no longer receives that stipend. So we figured it out more based upon the hours of serving as the SWAT team commander as vices, vices normally hourly wage.
This is your world, I.
No, and I, you know, I think it's justified. Is that, is that able to be absorbed within your current budget? Or is there gonna need to be a budget adjustment?
I don't know. You know, we can look at if we can absorb it or not. It'll probably be close, that we may need to have a budget adjustment in mid-year if it looks like we're gonna go over.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the role and I understand the role and I do understand the frustration. And Sean hasn't said anything about being frustrated about it, but we've had, we had a conversation not that long ago as he took a pretty big pay cut to go on salary because, you know, to become the lieutenant, which, you know, that's, he understood that. But I, I know that role is a lot more complex now than it has been in the past and there has to be a lot more.
And to Sean's credit of service, you know, he said he'll take this no matter what.
Sure.
Gets paid additionally for it or not because he cares about the team, he cares about the community, wants to make sure that, you know, that the team continues to progress and is as professional as it can possibly be. But I think in fairness to him, that the right thing to do is to give him a stipend to.
Well, the majority of time, this is time taken from family and it's, you know, there's not that many SWAT callouts at nine in the morning. They're, you know, they're usually at ten o'clock at night.
Or later.
Or later, yeah. All times of the day or night.
Just to give you an example, you know, the SWAT training takes place at five o'clock in the morning on Wednesday mornings. So they're getting up early, doing their four hours of training and being back to work by nine o'clock in the morning so that they're, you know, they're not losing any of their workday. You know, and so that's just, just an example of kind of the sacrifices that these men are taking to be a part of this team is getting up early, going to training and try to have it impact their families as little as possible. You know, it's a, it's a big sacrifice on their part.
No, I would, I mean, I would be in favor of the seven fifty because there are those significant amount of callouts. It's not like they're resting on their laurels very often. I would think that that would be appropriate.
Okay, is that a motion?
I will move to approve, where are we? I will move to approve stipend pay for the SWAT commander specifically. Sean.
Sean Peterson?
I'm like, Sean Peterson currently in the amount of, how do I make it, seven hundred and fifty? Per month, right?
While serving as SWAT.
Yeah, per month, that's, per month while serving as the SWAT commander.
I'll second that. So it's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You worked out with Luke.
I don't know where Sean's name went in that moment, but whatever.
We're getting older, Mike.
I looked at the, I was actually looking at the next item and my mind had already switched to the next item.
It's that gray hair on your head.
It's the gray hair.
Gray hair takes out a memory.
It's not good.
Cell. Uh, number five, discussion and possible approval of Utah Engine at Defense Grant number twenty-six D-eighteen covering July first through twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-six. And Candace isn't here, are you covering that, Sam?
I can say that I've reviewed the document and it appears to be in order based on the information she's provided. Really, we just wanted it in front of the commission for final approval. This is part and parcel with what we've done in the past. It's nothing new and there aren't significant changes.
I actually think I, I think I might have signed that already, so.
Well, then this could be considered either a ratification or a rule too.
So I'm not sure, I signed so many things, I don't, I don't remember.
Well, you did before the meeting, but we, we were gonna, we wouldn't have kept it.
Was that one I?
That was this one.
Because I get so many docu-signs nowadays, I thought I might have signed it on DocuSign.
And I just did a little bit of research. This is the annual grant, it's already been.
It's.
Approved, so the vote is whether to accept it.
Pretty much a no-brainer, so.
Well, I will move to, for approval of the Utah Engine Defense Grant number two-six D-one-eight covering July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Second, it's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Personnel, Jennifer.
Good morning.
Hello.
In the Children's Justice Center, Erin Green was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the vacant victim service coordinator position effective June twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five. In the Sheriff, Iron County Sheriff's Office Corrections Side, Brendan Humphries was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant full-time deputy one position effective June twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five. And then in the Road Department, Hazen Pettit was selected from the most recent recruiting process to be rehired and to backfill the vacant full-time technician, maintenance worker position effective July seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Wait, Hazen, is that the one we had?
Mm-hmm.
And he's coming back?
He's coming back.
That's awesome.
Yes, no training.
Yeah, he was a good hand.
Yeah.
That's, that's great news.
Hopefully we'll keep him.
All right, I'll move for approval of Personnel Items one through three.
I'll second that. Been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Bruce is probably doing happy dances. All right. So do we have, we don't have a closed session, John? Okay. Thank you. Okay, any boards?
I don't have any board issues. My boards are full.
All right, well, thank you everybody for your attendance, appreciate all you do.